Everyone, we'll go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 15, 2011. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 6, 2011, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property.
Motion to approve.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There's D, E, F, G, H, I, N, A. J. There's been one protest that's been deleted, I, so then Resolution J, and then I just found this morning that they want to pull on your item D.
Commissioner?
Yes?
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County Assessors Office. If we could, there are two that I would kind of like to pull today because we've gotten some additional information.
Okay.
I'd like our appraisal staff to look at before we bring it to you for a vote. One is CAC 11239.
Okay.
Octavio V. Contreras, and the other is 11270 Cory Scoville.
It shows on that dot above 70 that it was sold?
I believe so.
All right, so then items, resolutions, D, E, F, G, H, I's been pulled, and J's been pulled in addition to the two CACs.
Commissioner Morgan, it'll come on the tax rolls. The question is the number. And there's been some additional information provided about purchase price and some other things that we didn't have when we put a value number on it. And so I would just like our appraisal staff to have a crack at.
Good.
Motion to approve in adjourned.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Just a moment, please. Motion passes.
Can we go back for one second? Item J wasn't deleted. That was approved. Okay? Just I was deleted. Okay.
Okay.
We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, November 15, 2011. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, November 29, 2011. The complete listing is on file in the office of the county clerk comptroller. Item C are the exceptions for offer.com.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Consent agenda, items A through I, for a total of nine items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Craft?
Could we pull the item A and talk about that separately?
Okay. Any other items? Okay. Motion then into approve consent agenda minus item A. Please vote.
Just a moment. Okay. Motion passes.
Item A, resolution to approve an agreement between the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and PropertyRoom. This was held over from Tuesday, November 15 meeting. Commissioner Craft?
Yes. We're given information that PropertyRoom.com can increase our revenues by, or the amount products sell for, by 30 percent plus, 30 to 50 percent if I remember. And it shows a potential for increase to our general funds of $400,000. Am I correct?
Potentially.
Tom Wheeler, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, now, that's assuming the Room, and in the emails I've been reading, it says, these percentages are according to Property Bank. Where does Property Bank come up with these figures, and have we been able to verify them independently?
Property Bank, PropertyRoom.com?
Okay, Property Room, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's another company I deal with, and just flew out of my mind.
Those numbers.
PropertyRoom.com.
Those numbers come from the experiences of their clients.
And have we verified it with their clients?
No.
Okay, that's a problem to me. I cannot vote for it unless we do some independent verification because the small amount, even though $1,000 maximum potentially, it can also be a lot less because they get a 25 percent commission on most of the product, plus a few extra charges here and there. What is the break-even point? What do we have to increase sells-by in order to just break even?
Do you mean what does the item have to sell for more than it would at a live auction?
Yes, so that we now capture the same amount of money. See, these things sound good, but sometimes when we get down to the details, the nitty-gritty, if we haven't done our homework, they're not good. And it just looks like we're taking the word of the company and their sales pitch, and believe me, when I was in business, sales pitch after sales pitch after sales pitch, and you investigate it, and then they're not as good as they think. You know, look at .com when we went to it. Use that as an example. But it takes a long time to undo what we've done, so I can't support unless I have an answer to that. What is the break-even point? And have we checked with current vendors to make sure they are recuperating? And what were those vendors doing prior to? Were they much smaller communities?
Police I've seen is a range of communities, from large cities in California to small towns in Nebraska.
Okay. I could see a small town really increasing their percentage. And depending on how they compile their numbers, you know, if it's cumulative gross sales compared to how many had an increase and how much, you might find that municipalities our size didn't do as big an increase as a small community. So I would like to see some real investigation into this before we buy into it.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I raise questions as well, but I think the, Mr. Carlson, I think, did an excellent job working with the sheriff's office, and I can support this now, and I think it's, I understand Commissioner Craft's questions and his perspective, but I think this is something I can support, and I think, I'm definitely going to. So I think you've done a good job getting us the information. I appreciate it.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Good job, Eric.
Thank you. Citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to committees, the first one being the finance. Commissioners Craft and Morgan.
Yes, we have the report as presented. Commissioner Morgan and Borgenson's have been meeting with, we've been meeting and discussing many of the issues before us. And I received an interesting email that I'd like to talk about the vote last week. And the vote said, please reconsider the phrase on the taxes. And it was made by somebody who pays attention to a lot of what we're doing. But in the email, he says, this will bring serious discussion, and about the taxes. Well, we've been having serious discussions since long before I was elected. I've had serious discussions with constituents, with employees of Douglas County, department heads, with people outside the system in other, how can I phrase this? People outside the system and people outside of Omaha on what are the duties of the county government? What are we obligated to do? What do we do that's not obligated, that we shouldn't be doing? And we're looking at each and every one of these items. But we don't have to have a vote to have serious discussion. That discussion has been and is taking place, and it will continue to take place. And all of us, all seven of us, are receptive to input from the community as to where you see we are wasteful and how you see we can improve. And I'd appreciate information from the public, but we are having serious discussions, and we're doing it early on. So I'd like to compliment all the commissioners because we're all doing this. And that's, PJ, anything to add?
No, that's fine.
I think, Commissioner Craft, the only thing I would add is, the resolution would have set a concrete direction in which to go with forming a budget. Because right now, in forming the budget, you have an if, or, or an and for this, or that. You don't have a straight line of how we're forming the budget. So that's where I saw the advantage of the resolution, because then there would be no question from staff as to what they were supposed to be, or how they were supposed to be crafting the budget with us.
I do think, if I may, I do think the staff has gotten the point. I really do. We are quizzing them, we're looking at every aspect, we have the Blue Ribbon Committee. And before we take a step such as that, I think we need to have more information, such as the research we have the Mark Foxall doing, the director, Dr. Mark Foxall, the Director of Corrections, such as what the Blue Ribbon Committee comes with their recommendations. Because we have set clear directions. We do not want to raise taxes. But we also have to know where are we going to cut. One commissioner says, cut elsewhere, we need to add to the community mental health for outpatient therapy. But where are we going to cut elsewhere? You know, we're, we need to have discussions before we do that with the sheriff's department, which we need to have soon, with the treasurer, with every single department head, every elected official whose budget we don't have control over, to convince them that perhaps to satisfy one commissioner's needs, or some of the commissioners' needs, that we need to put money into community mental health because it'll save us money in corrections. So let's start talking to the individual elected officials to see what immediate results we can get. I think we need to take that step before we pass a resolution.
Any other comments or questions on that? If not, we'll move to criminal justice. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, this is a resolution that appears on our agenda from Sarpy County, asking us to join them to participate in a study to determine the viability of sharing emergency communications services. And we would bring someone in from the UNL Public Policy Center to do this work. They would start early January this year, and it would, we would give them a year to come up with some kind of a plan. I do want to make some comments about this. This is, while it appears on our agenda, is pretty straightforward. I do have to tell you that this has been a long process. Mark Conry, the Director of our 911 Services, deserves a lot of credit for getting us to this point today. And I also want to acknowledge the leadership of Commissioner Borgson in making this work. Also, Commissioner, the Chair of the Sarpy County Board, Tom Richards, has really been very cooperative. So we're very fortunate to have this moving along, and I would urge the adoption, I would make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I just want to add my support. This is a great thing. When we merged the city and county 911 years ago, we had envisioned that this potentially could and should grow to a regional center. And this is a step in that direction. I don't know how much money it'll save, but it will certainly enhance public safety. And this is kind of a no-brainer.
Yep, this is a good one.
A very good thing.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Say, Mark, bring us more things like this, will you?
The Human Resources Committee, the first item, the weekly personnel report as presented. If no one has any questions or comments. Next are the legislative items. The first one is a discussion on setting January 10, 2012, as the public hearing for consolidating the Register of Deeds and county assessor offices. Just a little background, the, this has been talked about for a number of years in consolidating various offices and looking at them. The law allows us to consolidate certain offices, these being two of them, and it's quite a process that we have to go through. This setting of the January 10, 2012, public hearing date, that's all that is, is just setting that public hearing date. And then you have to have it published for three consecutive weeks before you actually have the public hearing. Once you have the public hearing, and then the resolution is passed by the board, you adopt the resolution saying you want this in front of the voters, the first available general election or special election. The next general election is 2012. And so after that, if the voters approve that initiative, that ballot initiative, then the person elected for that consolidated office is not put on the ballot until 2014. So we're looking at quite a long process in whether or not, or moving forward with this, placing it on the ballot. So are there any questions or comments that someone would like to, Commissioner Craft?
Yes. Again, you know, I called on the public a few moments ago to bring us ideas. We also need input as to, are these the right offices? Is this the right time? And I do believe time has come where we start to clean up county government to the best of ours and the voters' abilities. And as you said, it needs to go to a vote of the people. But the people need to be informed about the duties of the offices. They also need to know, yeah, I'd like the public to approach us at the public hearings with, other than the standard, oh, put them together, but knowledgeable, well-thought-out statements. Because this, these are critical decisions we're making, and it's going to affect how county government operates in the future. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Is there a motion to, oh, no, this is just discussion. Sorry? Sorry? No, this is just discussion. No, come forward. I'm just saying, no, go ahead. Go ahead, take me, come in. I just wanted to clarify, because I made the mistake of saying, is there a motion to approve? And this is just for discussion. Setting the date for January 10, 2012.
Diane Badiato, Register of Deeds. In speaking with the individual board members yesterday, you know, it's a, it's a topic. We always are looking to streamline government, which is, which is much needed. But in the concept of streamlining government, I think we need to be very diligent and wise that we're doing that in the proper way. I just want a little explanation, get a little bit of, give you a little bit of explanation. The Register of Deeds office has the sole responsibility of maintaining the overall accuracy and integrity of the land records. It's accomplished through a systematic series of checks and rechecks. In the beginning, the Register of Deeds office, and the most critical component of the extensive land records filing system, which extends the ability for the assessor to evaluate the property, to come up with an assessed value, so that the treasurer could collect the taxes. So it's more than a clerical office. We have a myriad of documents that are mandated by statute on how they're, they're recorded and, and prepared. But I guess the, you know, the thing that concerns me the most is that, from our forefathers, when the land records process was initiated, having the treasurer, assessor, and register of deeds, and that's in reverse order, they were formed to create an intricate and, and system of checks and balances. It ensures that the property owner's interest is foremost, and the integrity of not only the property, but the documents involving those properties are intact. So a study to determine the best way, you know, to, to create the most efficient and, and cost savings method of facilitating our individual duties, I think is definitely needed. But it doesn't necessarily make sense to go forward without a lot of due diligence and a lot of, a lot of communication between the two offices. If it wasn't such, I guess if it wasn't such a serious step that, that you are contemplating looking into, it would, it was a little humorous that such a serious topic that will affect our, our county government and our form of, of land records going forward into the future, that part was taken a step further into discussion, and that two of the county board members called the assessor, but there was no communication with me. And I really feel like they're both individually, in their own right, very, very critical to the insurance of integrity of land records in our county. So I would, I would appreciate, and I would, I know going forward, in the public hearings, if that's how you choose to go forward now, that I just would request that all, all concerned parties be involved, so that you, as a board, and the public, get the most information that you can before any decisions are made on if it's even wise to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I've spoken to Diane a number of times, and I got the opportunity to break the news to her in the parking garage as we were passing after we had a meeting, but, and then I called Mr. Morrissey as well to tell him what was going on, and Mr. Kavanaugh, but, because he was involved at that time. But I have real mixed emotions about it. I mean, I'm a real supporter of consolidation and merger and things like that. And I try not to make this personal, but it's hard not to, because I am, I am a real fan of Diane Badiato. She's done miracles with that office. We've had some discussions and disagreements, but the bottom line is, she's really done a terrific job with that office. It's well-run, she's there, she's, she's just super-qualified. The other thing is that I have a difficult time, and Diane is the only female elected in the Douglas County Board, other than the commissioners and I, who run offices, who actually, you know, besides the two we're, we have the pleasure of having on this board. And I have a, a problem with shutting down her possibly, maybe she'd run and beat Roger if she got a license, who knows? But I mean, it's just one of those things. I, I'm not opposed to it, but I think it's coming on so fast that I'm not, I'm not sure yet today how I'm going to quite vote, but I don't want to, I'm leaning probably about 52 percent against voting against this, just because of the things I mentioned. If you were, and I'm sorry to make it personal, but if you were a slouch, you'd make it a lot easier, Diane. So, and the same with Roger. I mean, you know, we have our disagreements, but I think you're really good public officials, and, you know, you, that's all I can say, and I'm not really sure this is something I want to rush into. If this was maybe a six-month process, I might be more comfortable. So I still don't know how I'm going to vote, but I respect the work that you've done.
Thank you.
So it makes it very difficult for me to, to support this.
Thank you.
I do want to just make a clarification on that, Commissioner Boyle, is that there will be that kind of long timeframe, not six months, but it'll be that the thing is published for three consecutive weeks in the paper to get feedback from the public. So again, not six months, but it's not like next week we're going to vote on it.
Yeah, but three weeks from now it would, right?
Right. Just to set the public hearing.
Okay, but then after the public hearing, what happens?
Then after the public hearing, then we have a resolution on the board's agenda.
So be a month.
At, when did we figure out, January?
January 10 would be the public hearing.
Yeah. And then it could be the following.
It could be that same meeting, or if you wanted, delayed over one week, you could. Public hearing first, followed by a board vote of the resolution.
So we're talking seven or eight weeks.
That's just to put it on the ballot. That's all it is.
Well, and I understand, I, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. One other question that I, I'm concerned about is, you know, the office of Register of Deeds is up for election this time, and I, we would be, if this passed, the voters passed it in May or November of 2012. November of 2012. And then if the, if Ms. Badiato was reelected, what happens? You know, we've got, that's something we have to look at, too. And I'm not asking the county attorney at this point for an opinion, but that's something we need to look at, too.
It lays it out.
Does it?
That if she's elected in 2012, say she's reelected, and the initiative's on the ballot in 2012, in November.
Right.
And the voters say yes. Then we wait until the next general election, 2014, to put the election of the person for the consolidated office.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner? Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and this is just the starting of the process. It gives the elected land management officials time to talk amongst themselves, to come up with ideas that might not be the idea we've come up as to present to the voters, perhaps combining different offices, perhaps combining more offices. Excuse me. It brings the public into the discussion because we're letting people know early. I'm sure there'll be an article on this discussion today in the paper and on the news. And hopefully, the, I hate the term, thinking outside the box, but hopefully, we can think creatively in ways that can streamline county government. And it may not be your office. It may be other offices that develop from the public discussion. And I know you'll be here with a well-armed presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Tusha?
Good morning. You know, I don't want to make this personal, because it's not personal. You know, I want to thank Commissioner Borgson for bringing this on, because I've been very passionate about, you know, Mary Ann and I have been talking to the other commissioners for the last several retreats that we've had between senators and the legislature, and the tri-county retreats. And I've been very passionate about this, to consolidate different offices. I'm not, and I, like Mark said, I'm not saying that it'll be yours and the assessors. We don't know which ones yet. But I, I feel that with the consolidation, that there will be a tax, I mean, a cost savings in this. And please excuse me for anybody when I'm, when I'm saying this, but we've got several deputies, several chief deputies, several people in upper management, supervisor. Hopefully, if this does come to that point, and we do consolidate offices, that some of these people will be able to work for the other office, or retire early, or other things. I'm not looking to eliminate anybody's position or anybody's job. I'm just also looking at the fact to try to consolidate and, for cost savings, and just an overall, to, to bring county government more closer than, than all spread out than what it is. Well, like I said, this is not personal against anybody. I'm not nitpicking any specific person or department. I just want to see how we can take maybe two or three departments, consolidate them, and become more efficient to the public. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
None on that one. Then on January 10, we'll have the, setting the public hearing date on our agenda. Then on January 10th, we'll have the, setting the public hearing date on our agenda.
That will be the public hearing. January 10th is the public hearing?
The public hearing, I'm sorry, yes. Item B, legislative initiative to move the taxless function from the clerk's office to the assessor's office. The county clerk mentioned during a discussion that there was a piece in his office that was put in there years and years ago, and it is time to kind of clean up things and move it like all the other 92 counties do, and have this function back into the assessor's office. And so we would need legislation to do this, and this item basically makes this a legislative initiative for us to move this taxless function from the clerk's office to the assessor's office, as it is in all other 92 counties. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve this legislative initiative?
Second.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
One further thing that this resolution does is it further permits the keeping of the tax list to be maintained in electronic media.
Thank you. Thank you.
Motion passes.
Item C is the discussion and resolution on establishing a committee to look at transforming our real property system. Back in July, I believe it was, or August, our county clerk sent a letter to me asking if I would bring forth to this board establishing a committee to look at our real property system, looking at it in terms of streamlining efficiencies and governance, the whole, the whole thing. And so I asked him if he would have patience, as we got our Blue Ribbon Committee started and on its road, looking at various health service functions at our health center. And so now it's time to look at this, establishing this committee, and after seeing how our Blue Ribbon Committee has worked and getting the engagement of our community citizens, our county citizens, I am in full support of putting together a committee to do just that at our real property system. There has been such an engagement from our citizens on the Blue Ribbon Committee to really learn about what county government does, what these functions are, that they're looking at, and they're taking it very, very seriously. And we have talked and formed a county government awareness committee, and this is one piece of that, that I think engaging citizens to come inside and take a look at our functions more in detail is a very good thing. And so we would basically have the committee established, the commissioners, we would decide what the number would consist of. Our Blue Ribbon Committee, if you remember, we had commissioners pick two people from their district to be on the committee, so it's a 14-member committee. We could make it 14, we could make it seven, we could make it nine, we could make it whatever we want. But I think having commissioners choose someone from their districts to be on it is a very good way to establish it. So that's what this discussion and resolution does today, is setting forth the process, beginning of the process, to establish a committee if we so choose to. And I thank our clerk, Tom Kavanaugh, for bringing this forward as a way for us to take a real in-depth look at our systems.
You'd have each commissioner with one?
One or two, whatever we decide. I left it blank right now. There was initial discussion of it only being seven, but 14, I kind of like 14, only because that's two from each district, that's more input from citizens, so, you know, it's up to the board.
And then I heard you say, do a point from your district. If you wanted to appoint someone from outside your district, doesn't matter.
Yeah.
If you felt qualifications.
Yeah, just usually get two picks.
Right.
That's a better way to say it.
I think that's good.
Yeah. So with that, is there a motion to approve moving forward with establishing this committee?
I would, yeah, I have a question. Can we insert the number?
Yes, we would.
I'd like to see it be two.
Two members?
Yeah.
With each, okay, for a total of 14 members. Is everybody okay with that? Okay?
Motion passes.
And the next legislative initiative is to reduce the number of elected row offices, and this is brought to us by Commissioner Tusha.
Thank you. My microphone wouldn't go on, they don't want me to talk today, about that. Again, this is real similar to the fact of consolidating the row offices of the elected officials, but this is a tad bit different because of the fact, and I'm not gonna go over the whole resolution, but I want to point out a couple of items on it, that the elected governing body for the county, along with the elected officials who do not report to the governing body, and this does hinder the ability to establish county-wide priorities and policies, with the priorities and policies set by the governing body of the county tasked with the budget-making authority. And what I would like to do is convert specific elected row offices into positions appointed by the commissioners in the year of 2016. And we'll take it to the legislature in 2012 and ask this to be 2016. And basically, what this is, is if we start consolidating elected officials or row offices, whatever term you want to use on this, that we also need to look at the person that'll be in charge of these offices, and it'll be tough, because of the fact that whether they run for election, or whether we choose to appoint, I would like to go to the fact of choosing to appoint on several reasons. First of all, so that person, and again, no disrespect to anybody who's in the office right now, if we choose to appoint somebody, we could also put on that they have to have specific requirements in order. I know Nebraska mandates that some of the offices, you have to have specific requirements in your position to be able to run that office. But I think if we appoint somebody, that also needs to be definite on that, so that way, if we're gonna have somebody run one office, they have to have a background, or a license, or some idea, or education on how to run that department, not just somebody to come off the street and say, okay, I think I can do it. Well, you know, so can I, but, you know, so much for that one. But I just think that we need to appoint and have that person with qualifications, and then also appoint because of the fact that right now, we have, as Board of Commissioners, have no authority over elected offices and their budgets, and what they're allowed to do. And again, this would not only streamline government, this would consolidate offices, but also to the fact that this would give us a little bit more authority, and a cost savings on the fact that be able to go ahead and have more control over the budget as a whole, and then not just individual departments, and with the hiring and everything. So like I said, this is a cost-saving, streamlining, this is just a suggestion, but I, again, I feel very strongly about this, consolidation and having those departments as appointed, so that way we can have more cost-control savings and streamline on the government. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'm looking at Legislative Resolution 2CA, that was a proposed constitutional amendment introduced by Senator Harms from District 48. And I'd like to ask our legal counsel at some point to look at this, and see if we can, if this, if it is necessary to have a constitutional amendment to do what Senator, or excuse me, what Commissioner Tusha's asking about. He talks in here about amending Article 9, Section 4 of the Constitution, that deals with the legislature providing for the election of county and township officers. And I just want to be sure that we don't run amok of this. It is, I went down and testified in favor of this proposal. As it turned out, the folks from Western Nebraska, who are big supporters and real conservative Republican friends of mine, thinking the same way, were snowed in, and so I was the only person who testified for it, with, along with the introducer, Senator Harms. What it provides for is a county manager form of government, in which county officers may be appointed, and it's optional for each county, and shall occur in any county only upon adoption by a majority vote. So I don't know whether we have to do this or not, but I'm in favor of it. So I would, I intend to support what you're doing, Commissioner Tusha, but I do think we need to be sure that we don't have to have a constitutional amendment, which would be a big deal.
Is that bill still out there, or has?
You know, I don't know the status. It did not, got out of committee. So I don't know whether Senator Harms intends to do anything with it, or if, I'm not even sure that he's not term-limited out, I'm not sure. I'll do some homework on that.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I will make a motion to approve to send this to, for legislation in 2012, 2012, for the positions appointed by the Board of Commissioners in 2016.
Along with checking the?
Yes, verifying.
And I'll second that, and I have a question. What offices does this include? Is this in here somewhere? Did I miss it?
No, it's, it could be one or two of them, it could be all of them personally, on, I would like to see this looked at as all offices.
So that would include the sheriff, and the county attorney, and the public defender, and everybody?
I don't want to pinpoint, I'm sorry, I'm speaking out of turn.
No, good, you're good.
I don't want to, you know, again, I'm not making this personal, I'm not pinpointing any specific office, but I think if we do it, we should look at the overall picture of all the elected officials, not just say, well, this one or this one, I think we should look at the whole picture.
Okay, and I'll support it, but you know, there's something else I think we need to really talk about, the elephant in the room, if I can say that, 800 pounds. That is, you know, I'm not so sure that the county board is an effective way to run county government. I mean, what territory do we, you know, and we're so detached from the offices, we don't have anything to say about how these offices are run, we really don't. So I mean, what's the point of the county board? Can we, should we vote ourselves away? I'm not so sure. I mean, I'm running for reelection, so it sounds, you know.
I've heard you are.
Yeah, I am. So it's a little hypocritical, all those kids from Spring Lake, are you kidding me? I mean, I got my picture taken with them. But, no, anyway, so I mean, I think it's something we need to talk about, because, and I'm not, I'm not really in favor of turning this over to the city of Omaha, because I'm not real fond of some of the things they're doing, particularly in planning, but anyhow, it's something that we need to think about seriously, sometime down the road, changing this whole operation.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and you mentioned the fact that we don't really know what's happening in these offices, only what we're, you didn't say only what we're told, but that's the case. And we have no control over how efficiently some of these departments are run. And some of the elected officials may not be as efficient as we'd like them to be. We have, by the way, this, not to degrade any elected official, we have high-quality elected officials in Douglas County, and I'm proud of every one of them. There's not one that I think needs to be thrown out. But at the same time, we have to look at the efficiencies of our government, make sure the elected officials are squeezing that lemon to get every drop out of it, so that our taxpayers don't pay any more than necessary. And I'm not sure some of them are doing that. You know, you don't have to prove you're a good manager to be elected. You don't even have to show that you can read and write, and that's sad.
That's kind of our qualifications, isn't it?
But, you know, we just have to make sure that this county government, in these tough times and in the future, runs as efficiently as possible. You know, that's been the theme of this meeting, I guess. So thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the relevance of county government. I think its relevance is needed. One, because, as was mentioned last week, county government is the safety net to basically people at the local level. I mean, the fed, federal decisions eventually flow down to the county. And it's relevant because it is the most immediate official that most people feel, and most of the feedback that we give back affect them at a really rubber-meets-the-road level. It's hard for a state senator to feel that, to some degree, on local pieces, because, you know, the operations of it are just totally, totally different. I definitely agree with the relevancy of looking at it always, you should continue to look at your operations, but, you know, I think there's ways that you can exert, I think we still have appropriating power, we still set the general budget, and I think that the distinction of county government, and actually, some of the challenge at front of it, is the dialogue that has to go back and forth. I think compared to a lot of governments around, it's functioning. It functions very conservatively, it functions very physically efficient, and it does open dialogue. It's complicated as hell, but it's efficient. Thank you.
There's a motion and a second on the floor for this legislative initiative.
Motion passes.
Item three, approval of the Douglas County Pension Plan, excuse me, update by Kathy Goodman, from Human Resources. Did you want to just give us a snapshot of?
Sure, I will. Kathy Goodman, Employee Benefits. Snapshot's gonna be hard to do, because quite frankly, we've had a small little committee from our pension committee that has been working on our pension plan document for really probably a year or more. Steve Walker, myself, Bernie Ma-Mequette, Jennifer Beishaim, and Lee LeJour, basically kind of went through this whole pension plan document, and basically, line item by line item, just to get it updated with clarification and understanding. All my knowledge is up here, frankly, probably, I'm the only one that has that much knowledge regarding the pension plan, and really, truly, somebody else needs to have that understanding. We've been pretty diligent at educating the members of the pension committee, so that they're clear and taking piece by piece through that plan document. Earlier this year, we sent this document out to Barrett Home, Gary Clatterbuck, who reviewed our pension plan document back in '06, when it was last updated, basically for federal guidelines and different things that have to be within our particular type of pension plan. Those are the legal things that have to be changed. That document that you have today reflects those legal changes that we have to make. Some of the other changes that we made were really not changes in changing benefit, but more clarifications. We've had a couple issues in the last year that come to the pension committee, that clarification needed to be made, so that what we've been doing may not be what the plan actually says. So I think we've really done a good job on cleaning that up. We have also added some information in this document that will move us forward regarding different things that get negotiated with the unions for their particular pension plan in the event that those rules change from Rule 75, or whatever. And as you know, there's been a couple that have agreed to the different pension plans for new hires. We made very general language in there, so that in six months, when you negotiate with some other union, that is not gonna have to be changed, because we're in general referring back to labor contracts within this document, so those specific pension plans within different union contracts that are changed, they would go back to that union contract. I feel very comfortable that we're, what, five years now with a new document going forward, that this will hopefully, in my tenure, not have to be done again. But I'm very comfortable with where we're at, it's been reviewed, and reviewed, and again, reviewed. So I believe that what we give you today for your approval is a good document going forward.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you very much. Thank you. All right. I want to thank you very much, it really is a great document, and I attended that meeting, and we had a good discussion about it. There's something I'm, when I was reading it, a little bit confused about, which it's... There's something I'm, when I was reading it, a little bit confused about, which it's section, it's a definition, section two definitions, right at the beginning, 2.1, and it says, as used in this plan, and the one I'm starting to question a little bit is paragraph B. "Employee means any person employed in service by the county who receives compensation at an established rate and working more than 20 hours each week in a nontemporary, nonseasonal position according to the rules and regulations of the county universally applied, except for the following classes." Okay, so, does that expand it by making it, by saying, working more than 20 hours? Because what was a regular employee before this?
It was the same. What we were doing is being more specific. This was based on Barrett Home coming back and said, you really need to be a little bit more specific with what you mean by employee.
All right, thanks. And I would just close by saying, I think it's really a good job. And you're talking about using this one document as the source, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, and that's very helpful, because you can't have, that's where you had some problem, as you well know.
I will, I will interject here a little bit, though. Bernie Mamacat from the county attorney's office, and myself, and Steve Walker, prepared probably for my position, a document that will speak to interpretation of this, if you will, to have a better understanding from somebody from my perspective. So if that ultimate truck hit me and fell off the earth here, somebody else would be able to pick that up and have an interpretation of really what this all means. I've been here 18, going on 19 years. I kind of know it in my sleep, and I don't really feel comfortable that anybody else would be able to do that with basically out those two documents.
It's a good idea, a good idea you're doing that.
Commissioner Tusha?
Morning. I just want to verify something. Is this for current and future employees, or is this going to be across the board for even previous employees with this document?
This particular document covers anybody that is employed that would meet the qualifications of being in our pension plan.
Okay. Another thing, when, when we're changing this document or giving it to new employees, do they have to sign a statement saying that they received this or that they understand this?
Probably not the latter.
Okay.
Believe me, I've been here long enough that the latter I would never get. But, but some law was passed about a year or so ago, that any new hire has to sign off that they've received all the new hire information. That was something, actually, I think it was passed by the health care reform. I'm not exactly sure. So we get something signed by every employee that's new, that they've received this packet, they've received all their health information, et cetera, because if they don't do something, we're required by the health care formula that we have to sign them up for insurance. And so when they sign that document, that they are basically saying, you know, I've got, I've received all this information. That's all the further that we go.
Okay.
We will provide this document, you know, to employees and make it available online once you approve all of this, and so it'll be updated and therefore. I do want to just, one thing that I want to clarify, that is a slight change, doesn't change benefits, but it is a slight change, just to make it clear, qualified domestic relations orders, so in a divorce situation, in the past, up until you approved today, our pension plan would split if we got a qualified domestic relations order accordingly to that, as long as it met the qualifications of our plan. In all of this last few years of dealing with qualified domestic relations orders, which are very difficult to deal with because of just the circumstances, we as a committee made a decision that we would not allow it. And this was after talking with the city and other entities that do not allow qualified domestic relations orders. Basically, what the court does is come in and say, you need to split this up to these two people. What we are doing with this is saying, we're not going to do that. Courts, you will have to make the split, however that is. It's going to be a lot cleaner for my position, and it puts it back on the courts, which frankly, I think that's where it should be. So that is really kind of the only major change, other than just clarifying the language. But I did want to make sure you understood that that, going forward, we would, we would no longer accept qualified domestic relations orders.
But can they, can you use it from the previous? Or again, that would, whatever we state today, somebody can't say, well, last year I had this one, and you're not honoring that, even though you had a new one. There's nothing they can do about that, correct? They have to follow by...
Once, once you vote on this today, we will insert today's date as no longer accepting qualified domestic relations orders.
Okay.
And I've already had a few, because preliminarily, they send you a draft, and you have to review that, the county attorney reviews that, makes sure it meets, and then it goes back to the lawyers, and then they go through it, then it goes to the court. So it's, sometimes it's several months before I would get the final. And we have a couple of them that are lingering there, but we do not have the final. Anything that I have set up as a qualified now, I think there's four or five, maybe, maybe six or eight, those will stay. Those are split, they're done. But we would just not do anything further. But this particular document doesn't change any of the benefits that the employees have. It just states and clarifies anything new that you negotiate with the unions for new hires. It's pretty much covered in general, because we tell them to refer back to those individual labor contracts.
Also, and I believe this was discussed in a committee meeting, do you actually have to give the employees a hard copy of this? Can we, again, cost savings, just have them sign a statement saying, here's, here's the, the agreement, the plan, and you're signing this, and here's the website, you can go ahead on the website and look this up?
There was a...
Can we...
Quite a bit of discussion over this, Commissioner Tusha. I'll tell you, back in '06, this very same discussion with this body of, of you individuals was discussed. I have frankly, a completely different opinion of it. And, and we voted, not we, but the pension committee voted, that all individuals should receive a copy. We have laundry workers, we have dietary workers, we have people that don't have access. And I'll tell you what happens. Doing this long enough, somebody will come to me and say, I don't have access. I have no way of doing this. You know, can I have a book? So you give them a book. And then you get Joe down the other department, well, I didn't get a book. I actually, the cost to print these documents is not that much. It's printed up in the printing department. It's part of what we do every four, five, six years. I personally believe all employees should get a copy.
Can you give them the option?
Well, I tell you what I really, what the pension committee had voted on last month to do is, we're going to be sending pension statements out, we're going to be sending benefit statements out after the first of the year, and the pension plan document just seems to fit right in with doing that. One time, you get a copy.
Okay.
If, if you lose your copy, you're going to be directed online.
Okay.
I just...
At least that will be somewhat of a cost save.
And we do that, we actually do that now. And every new employee receives a document. But I just think, because we're speaking to union contracts in here, and we're speaking to potentially new benefits for new employees, I really feel it's very important that everybody gets one document initially.
Yeah, and again, I would, you know, I would like to see, maybe even eventually, to be able to give some of the option. I mean, because if you're looking at this, and I just killed a tree myself by printing one of them off, I mean, you know, there's a lot of costs. And I know you said there's not, but actually, you know, every time you have to give a new employee one, and you know, you got more paper, more ink, you know, I was just looking at different ways, again, to streamline this. And maybe in the future, we can say, all right, you have an option, either a hard copy or go online, and then have them sign a statement. So that's something we'll just look at for the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
You know, I, I brought this up and objected to the printing at the meeting that was held, and I thought about that. And I think Kathy Goodman is correct, that everybody should be given a copy. And I'm not so sure that even if someone comes up and says, I've lost it, that you shouldn't give them another copy. I think in the scheme of things, it's such an important document, that I do think the employees have to have readily, ready access to it. So I would just defer to Kathy Goodman's judgment, after all these years of who should, who gets a copy, who needs one. So I've thought about that, and I think you make a great deal of sense on that issue.
I appreciate it.
So I'm very comfortable with what you've done, and you're making decisions on this.
Thank you.
With that, there, was there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Please vote.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks again for doing such a great job.
Next is a resolution approving the pay increases for the chief deputies, district court bailiffs, and sheriff captains. This is a 1% that was put in budget for this year's increases. It's a 1% for all of them that I just listed. Is there a motion to approve?
It will be approved.
Second. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, Kathleen. There are a number of employees who earn over $100,000. How many, I asked you to research for me, how many of our employees, because of something that was reported recently, how many of our employees earn over $100,000?
Forty out of the 2,300. That includes the elected officials, the psychiatrists, the medical directors, and the captains, the sheriff captains.
Okay, so it's not a huge percentage of our employees, and many of these are the elected officials psychiatrists. And research has shown that our psychiatrists are working for us at a very reasonable wage, as I recall.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all I needed for right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I'd like to go to the item that's, the supporting document. I'd like to ask a question, maybe of Mr. Lejour. Is he still here?
Yes.
Would you step down? It deals with, and I sent you an email on it, about what other benefits go to these folks, and some get them and some don't. But would you talk about, for example, the sheriff's captains that are making $104,000? They'd get a 1% and go to $105,000. What other benefits do they receive? Any, anything longevity?
I'm not aware that they receive any other benefits than regular employees.
Okay, so they're, well, other than regular employees, but do they get longevity?
I'm not sure if they do or not. I think they do. I'm not so sure on that.
Okay. Well, what normally would be longevity, if, I don't want you to speculate necessarily, but if you, if they get longevity, would it be a percentage of their wage, of their salary?
It's a set amount that the county board had approved, I believe, back in, let's say, 2000, 2000...
Lee, can I interrupt you for one sec? I think Patrick would be able to answer your question on that one.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
The captains, most if not all of whom were previously covered by the FOP-2 bargaining unit, receive longevity, it's a percentage of their pay. That's different than most of the employees who receive longevity, it's a flat dollar amount. The captains would receive that percentage of their pay as longevity. And that's, again, that's an extension of when they were covered under the FOP-2 bargaining unit contract, where the deputies get the percentage longevity.
Okay, so is it, it's not 10%, is it 3% do you think?
It's upper, it's a maximum of 5%, I believe. I believe it's, goes from, from 1% scale up to 5% of their pay with the most, most years of service.
Okay, I don't want to hound you, but do you think it's 5% for these, so it'd be 5% of $105,000, or 5% of $104,000?
If, if they've been there over 20 years, it would be 5%. I believe it's 1, 2, 3, and 5, based on how many years you've been there. I can go pull the contract, if you want me to do that.
Well, I appreciate this. I, what I'm, what I'm trying to, you know, point out is that we've got, we have some things that we're still dealing with in these pay raises, things that existed, safeguards for the employees that existed before the unions came in. And I am a strong supporter of the unions, and I think I introduced every resolution to bring them in. I much prefer dealing with unions. Patrick, I know, doesn't necessarily, but he does a great job, rather than with automatic increases that we don't seem to, I know we're the ones who are responsible for them, but once they come in, we can never let them go. Longevity was, I think, brought in to encourage people who were skilled to stay. You know, and that's, that's one issue. I don't know whether that incentive is even needed now. Another one is the step increases that guarantee that people got in, got raises if they worked for somebody in an office, and the elected official didn't particularly care for them, it didn't make any difference, they got an increase, they were protected. It was a patronage system before the civil service came in. But those are holdovers. Then pile on top of that is the union contract that negotiates and compares all these other employees. And so you get this, you know, when you give somebody a 1% increase, they're really getting up to a 6%. And we don't see that here. It says percent increase 1%. Well, it could actually be, for a couple of them, maybe 5% more. And we can't afford a 6% bonus, and somehow we've got to figure out what we're going to do with this. So I, and the others, you know, I, we, we nicked the election commissioner pretty well, gave him 0011. And so I, you know, I, and I, and I know that there's support on this board to give ourselves zero for a couple of years, until we consider it again. But, and I just feel that we just can't afford to give these raises. And it may not be a huge amount, it's 40 people, but, and we appreciate the work, I see them as assets. I mean, you just heard from Kathy Goodman, for example, and that committee, and Lee worked on that too, did really good work on it, they're valuable. I don't deny that. But we just can't afford it. It's like a child who wants to go to Harvard and doesn't have a scholarship. I'm really sorry, but I can't afford the $70,000 a year to send you there. So I mean, I just come to grips with the assets we have and pull back. I ran into two people shopping at the grocery store last weekend, one fellow who works, I won't describe where it is, because, anyway, this fellow works at a big grocery store, one of the chains, and his hours had been cut to 25. Well, that came the same day he got laid off from his second job. And he's scared to death, he doesn't know what he's going to do. You know, and then I ran into somebody whose house is being foreclosed on, we're going down to get some bread, and we had a conversation about that. I just really think that we need to respect what's going on in the community, and acknowledge that we can't afford to give these raises. And I've said my piece, and everybody's probably got their decision made, but I hope you'll consider this. I think it's, it's difficult, but I think we need to do it. So that's the end of my, my speech.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I really think largely we could be taking this item and the next one together. The next one is a resolution approving pay increases for non-union county employees, and my comments probably pertain to both items, so I'll try not to speak twice. But it is misleading to say these are 6% raises. If an employee gets longevity, they get longevity, regardless, but it's still only a 1% increase. If they are getting 5% longevity, they will still get 5% longevity, regardless of how we vote today. So to say that we're giving them a 6% raise is wrong. It is a 1% raise that we are considering, only this and nothing more. I would ask, when was the last time we approved any union contract with less than a 1% increase for the annual cost of living adjustment? And I don't remember one. I do not ever remember a union contract that we have signed that had any annual increase of less than 1%. So to me, there is a question here of equity. When we say the non-union county employees should not get a 1% pay increase, while every union employee gets at least a 1% increase, we should be treating them fairly, and the same. Commissioner Boyle, I believe you made a comment during the committee meeting last week, that if these people want a raise, perhaps they should organize and become another union. That is not what I aspire to. I have been through where we froze wages for two years on county employees, and ended up with more than 1,000 additional union employees as a result of that action. So it can feel good like you're saving a few dollars short-term, but in the long term, you're not. And if we, excuse me, if we freeze, I believe there are four sheriff's captains that, as I recall, that's how many are on the department, so there's four, four people that we're talking about there. If we freeze their salaries, then what happens when other people beneath them start passing them? And the compaction is a very real issue. When everybody else is constantly moving up to take the people at the top and say, but you don't get to move up anymore, pretty soon they are going to get passed. I think the 1% pay increase that is under consideration, that is in the budget, is reasonable, and in the long term, I think it is in the best interest of the county to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, you know, I don't know that I disagree completely with what Commissioner Duda is saying. I, I think, though, that the biggest difference between this and the union contracts is that we don't have discretion, frankly, with the union contracts. We have the same old commission of industrial relations... We have the same old Commission of Industrial Relations sitting here all around us, behind our chairs. And, and so we have to go with, under the guidance of our negotiator, who does a great job, Patrick Bloomingdale, comes in and says, "This is what they're making in Ramsey County, and this is where Pope County and all that stuff." So we end up, you know, having, we're forced to that, because if we go to the CIR, you know, they're going to get that and maybe more. And so there's, you know, he guides us and gives us good decisions, I think, good recommendations on what to do. And that's the distinction. This way, this place, we, this area, we have the ability to make a real decision about what we're going to spend. And it's unfortunate that we single them out, and I don't mean to, but they're the only ones that we can, we can do this. We can, you know, we're doing it to ourselves. And I, and I think most of these employees would, would not complain that much about, you know, 1%. It's not a lot, but, and I just think we ought to consider it seriously. And I don't want to take any more time, but I, I consider employees assets. I don't consider them liabilities. We have very talented people working for us who, and great jobs, wonderful. They do great jobs, and I don't have any objection to that, but I just think we just don't have the money.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, Commissioner Duda, I agree with some of your comments of what you stated about deserving of this and so on, but I think agreeing with Commissioner Boyle, that there comes a time, and I think that's why I brought that resolution forward, that we've got to make the hard decisions. And we're at a time when, you know, the county has some real fiscal challenges. And I think here and now is the time to make a statement that we're going to try to do everything we can to hold the line. And I don't feel that I can support the 1% increase at this time, based on what I see are challenges ahead to try to have a budget this year without a levy increase. And I just wanted to be on record stating that there's any question that this is one of those hard decisions, and you'd like to be supportive of the 1%. But at the same time, I, I just feel this is the beginning of trying to decide if we're going to hold the line or not hold the line. I hope in the future, with other decisions that we'll make concerning the blue ribbon and so on, that maybe there'll be a time when we can start to move in a different direction. But that's where I am.
Lee, did you want to say anything? Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. In response to Commissioner Boyle's concerns about the Court of Industrial Relations, I agree. They've thrown up many very expensive impediments to our budgeting. They are a real foreign in our side in terms of the rulings that they give out and the difficulty of complying with some of those rulings. And they certainly don't look at what we can afford. And this is exactly why I do not want to push another group of county employees to organize. So we, we think alike, I think, with some regards. The only difference is how do we respond to those concerns? I want to stay away from the Court of Industrial Relations. I want to stay away from having more county employees organize. Thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
I, I agree that. I agree we don't want more unions, because we already deal with, is it 17 negotiating bodies?
We have 10 unions, 17 contracts covering 33 bargaining units.
Okay. And that's daunting when you look at the numbers. But at the same time, I'm looking at this, and just preliminary count, if there's four sheriff's captains, of these people here who earn over $100,000, nine of them out of the 40 that we have are in this class. I don't have a clue what a district court bailiff gets in another county. I don't have a clue what the sheriff's chief deputy gets in Bellevue, or Sarpy County, for example. But as Commissioner Morgan says, there comes a time. Now, I have a quick question. This contract only deals with 2012. Okay? I just wanted to verify that. So in 2013, we'd be reconsidering anything we do. Okay. I, I know some counties have voted to decrease their pay levels. If you look at Detroit, for example, where they made some major, major, major cutbacks, and they're working with like 40% of what they used to have. We're not there, thank God. That, that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
I, I really agree. We agree with everything that's been said on both sides, but here's the bottom line for me, is, to me, we should have been talking about this even with the union contracts, if we were serious about trying to start a reduction in salaries, even if it's the CIR. Going to the CIR is a crapshoot, if you will, depending on what they, they say. Because I do agree with Commissioner Duda. This, this is an equity decision that this board has to make in how we treat non-union versus union employees. And just because you have the CIR looming out there, to me, doesn't mean that you just give out the raises as we did, and then kind of put it on the backs of the people who aren't in a union. And so I, for one, again, completely support what you said, Commissioner Morgan, that you have to make the hard decisions and start somewhere, but I don't think this is the place to start. I think we have to take it, or should have taken it, a step further when we were looking at union contracts and what the raises were we were given there, and taking it seriously in not giving out those increases, instead of just picking out the individuals that are not in a union. And again, I think this whole board has been very supportive of unions, and this is not knocking unions in any way, shape, or form, but it's just that we have a tendency to treat the two differently when it comes to handing out increases. And I, I, I think we should have started a long time ago instead of on this group of employees.
Commissioner Tusha? Or, sorry, Commissioner Craft?
Oh, my mind was off.
Okay, Commissioner Tusha?
On that note, I, I have a tendency to agree with you, because we do treat the union employees totally different than we treat the non-union employees. And here, a few minutes ago, I'm saying we need to consolidate, we need to, you know, cut funding, we need to do this, we need to streamline. But yet, on this particular item, I am voting yes for the 1% increase. And the reason I am is, there are several reasons. First of all, you know, one is with the unions, you know? I'm not saying that these people will go out and start their own union, but what happens if they do? You know, that's going to be a major increase for us right there. So we, that's one thing we have to consider. A second thing that I think we have to consider, you know, you're looking at $100,000, you know, $104,000 to $105,000. And I know one, that 1% is not a lot, and overall, it may come up to a small lump sum. But these are, these are people just like every one of us. I mean, you know, they have expenses, they have households. Maybe that $1,000 is not going to make a lot of difference, but some of them, but some of them, it may. It may make an extra house payment, or may put food on the table. I don't think we should condemn these people because of the fact that they're not union. And if we don't even just give them that 1% today, in the future, I think, whether they go to union or not, in the future, we may have to be looking at 3% or 4% or 5% to increase them because of the fact that we haven't been increasing them throughout the years. So those are just some of the statements why I am voting for this today. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, are we talking about both of these resolutions, or just the first?
I was just going to interject that we certainly can, because it's basically the same thing. So are you okay with?
Well, I'm okay with talking about both of them, but if we are, I've got some other comments to make.
Well, could we then have a motion to approve both?
As the maker of the motion, I would like to add as a friendly amendment that the motion includes both items four and five on our agenda.
Who's second?
I did. And I'll agree with that, yeah.
So you can make comments on both.
Okay, thank you. Well, in the first resolution we have, we have only two categories of employees that I see, other than the chief deputies. We're talking about the sheriff's captains, and there are four of them, and the district court bailiffs, I think there's probably 12 or 13 of them. Let me mention that the sheriff's captains do not have a sufficient number to organize. I believe the number is 10, a minimum number of 10 employees to organize. So the sheriff's captains, I don't believe, can organize if they're just going to have a captain's union.
I think they can.
Really?
I do, Bill.
We have a bargaining group of six teachers at the youth center, so.
All right. Well, I'm outdated. The other, I mean, I just, you know, I, I don't know, I just don't see that as, as a threat. I mean, it could be. The other resolution, which is approving pay increases, it's too, too bad they're called non-union, because that's not really what the split should be, although it exists. The, do these employees, any of them, the range or others, who gets, who gets step increases in here? How, how many people are getting step increases?
Kathy?
About, and Lee, I may need a little help here. 88 of them do not, and I think 270 do have steps. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's approximately correct. There were 322 employees who are not union, that's the range in the step plan employees, and I think it was 88. I don't have my numbers with me here, but that's approximately the split.
So 270 of these folks, you know, if we took away the 1%, they're still getting a step increase, which is automatic. And what's the minimum step increase? 2% or 3%?
It's between 3% and 4% per step.
Commissioner?
Now, there are a number who are at the, have reached the top of the step and do not.
And they get, probably get longevity?
They get no, they get no step increase since they've reached the top.
Do any of these employees get longevity?
If they've been here five years, 10 years.
So I mean, this is the deal. We're focusing on the 1%, but out here, over in this area over here, we've got raises coming that we're not even discussing. There, you know, 3% and 4% out here, maybe 5%. And then there's longevity out here, too. So it's not like we're taking food off the table. You know, there are, there are automatic raises that are out there that really aren't discussed. And I, Patrick may want to say something.
Yes, per the resolution and the first bullet point, those that are on a step or who are going to be eligible to receive a step increase are not going to receive the 1%. So those step plans are effectively frozen. If you're at the top of your step and are not eligible to receive a step increase, then you will receive the 1%.
Okay, so are the steps then being eliminated for how many people?
It's not eliminated. They're frozen.
Oh, they're frozen.
I, maybe somebody else can say, of the non-union employees who are on a step, how many are not at the top step? Those would not receive, those employees would not receive the 1%. They would only receive the step increase on their anniversary date.
Okay.
I think.
Commissioner Mark Williams, compensation manager. I just looked at the figures this morning of the 207 step employees that we have under the, the non-union groups. 101 of those are at the maximum. 106 are still somewhere in the steps. They will, they would receive a step. I would like to, to present a contrast. We have these 207 people for whom we're freezing the, the rates and the, the steps. We have 1,538 represented employees who will continue to have both the across-the-board increases and steps.
Thank you. Were you done, Commissioner Boyle?
I am.
Commissioner Morgan?
There's one other factor I think, Lee, I'm accurate about, I hope. The other thing you have to remember is, there is a cost to the county because of the health benefit plan and so on, so it's not like we're not spending more dollars each year because of the increase in the health care and that sort of thing. Would that be an accurate statement?
When you say increase in the health care.
The cost of the health care that.
Well, our health care plans have gone up. I think it was about 6, 6.1 for.
4%.
4% for 2012. And that applies to those employees who are not covered by the CIR ruling that said that they, we'd had to negotiate the, any increases in their, their rates or plan design features, et cetera. So we do have a number of employees, I'm going to say probably close to, I don't know, maybe Patrick would have this, but I think there's probably about 800 to, maybe close to 1,000 who have health insurance rates at the 2009 amount. And then the other employees are paying the 2012 rates. So there, they've been, they've had an increased cost in their health insurance, and the other folks have not.
Yeah, and so is the county, and what we contribute to that also.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But there was also, I think what Lee was trying to say was that increase in cost is not only beared by the county, but also by the employee.
Right.
On the increase in the insurance.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Again, the motion is to approve items four and five. Mr. Boyle?
I do. We're, we're going to be raising the salaries of the chief deputies, and I believe we're proposing to freeze the salaries of the elected officials who are up, the registered deeds and the county clerk and the county commissioner. So we're going to be giving the deputies increases, but we're going to be freezing their, their bosses.
And what are you saying?
Well, I'm saying that that's one more reason why we shouldn't support this increase if we're, if, you know, not singling out, I don't want to single out, but there are offices on this where the chief deputies, if you look at the list, there are chief deputies whose elected official they, they are, they answer to, are up for reelection, and we're saying that the elected official doesn't get an increase, but we're giving an increase to the chief deputy. So isn't that a little inconsistent?
Except for if I'm, we, that wouldn't be for this next year. We, we wouldn't be setting salaries. The salaries are already set for the next year for the elected officials. When we set them, it's for the next.
Next term?
Yeah. So they're already set for whatever we set last time.
So in other words, we're freezing the elected officials in 2013, effective 2013, and so we're going to give the deputies a raise now.
Well, but the elected official is also getting that raise that we set last time around.
Yeah.
So.
When times were better, I suppose.
Well, but I mean, your point was, is that we were, we're going to be giving them a raise and not the elected official.
Right.
But that's not true. The elected official is going to get the raise based on what the resolution was we passed setting them the last time. So this year, the elected official will get the raise, and the employee will get the raise. Then when we set the new, they go into effect next.
January.
The third, well, 2013, when we set it for the next four years.
I guess my point is that we set those salaries of the elected officials when times were better. And so I don't know what the increases were. They weren't that big, but they were.
2%, I think, I believe.
So would we do that today? The answer is no, I don't think. And so why are we, why are we doing this when, you know, times have changed? Why are we increasing the chief deputy's salaries when we wouldn't be doing this for their bosses if their bosses were up? I, I just, I see a real inconsistency here, and we just need to say, okay, enough is enough. I really regret it, but we can't do it. It just, we don't have the dough.
And I guess, you know, not to prolong this, but I guess I'm going to prolong it.
Okay.
Because I, again, I think we're talking out of both sides of our mouth when it comes to union employees versus non-union employees. And I know it's, we probably shouldn't be labeling or tagging, but we've already treated a set of employees differently than we're treating others. And we can say that it was, you know, a cost-saving measure, so we wouldn't go to the CIR. But again, if we were, if we were really looking at holding the line on salaries for county employees, then that really should have started, in my opinion, back when we did the labor contracts. And the labor contracts are, are larger. In fact, we just approved one last week for the next three years at 2%? 8%?
8% total for a year period.
So, you know, again, I, I think we should have started long ago in trying to hold the salary adjustments down with the union contracts, rather than just this group of employees that we have before us.
Well, I'll try not to prolong it either, but I think it's a hoax. I think what it is, is that, you know, we couldn't, when these contracts, labor contracts were brought to us a year ago or two years ago, it is always the threat of what the comparabilities are. And so we have to look at the comparabilities, and so we have. And so, we have to look at the comparabilities, and so, we have Mr. Bloomingdale tell us that this is where we think we ought to go, and we think we can win this, and that it's reasonable enough increase. It is a threat that does not exist with these employees. We don't have Ramsey County hanging over our head saying, "We pay our sheriff's captains $224,000." It's just not there. So, that's the distinction for me. And I think what you're saying is, with all due respect, is unrealistic. We could have said, "We're giving you 1 percent." We tried that with several unions a couple of years ago, and it went right down the tubes. We got nowhere. Matter of fact, I think we even had an unfair labor practice brought up against us because we talked 1 percent, or we switched or something. Anyway, I think we need to vote. I guess I'll call the question.
Good. Any other?
We agree on some basics.
Yeah. I agree on that one.
Yeah.
Please vote.
Okay, so, we're voting yes, of course, is to give raises. No is to, is not.
For both 4 and 5, the both resolutions, 4 and 5.
Motion passes.
With that, there's no need for executive session. Is there a motion? Well, first of all, there's an administrative services committee immediately following this meeting.
Five-minute break.
Five-minute break, in room 903. There is a criminal justice committee today at 1:30 in room 903. The last scheduled meeting in 2011 for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will be held Tuesday, December 13. And the first scheduled meeting in 2012 will be January 10, 2012. Now is our motion.
Second?
Lee, vote.
We're having a brief discussion. 311 presentation.
Wow, my mind is good. I was going, oh my God.
Motion passes.
Say, Pam, are you able to bring up your...